Ours was the first revolution in the history of mankind. That truly reversed the course of government. And with three little words. We, the people. We, the people, tell the government what to do. It doesn't tell us. We, the people, are the driver. The government is the car. And we decide where it should go and by what route and how fast. Almost all the world's constitutions are documents in which governments tell the people what their privileges are. Our constitution is a document in which we, the people, tell the government what it is allowed to do. We, the people, are free. This belief has been the underlying basis for everything I've tried to do these past eight years. But back in the nineteen sixties, when I began, it seemed to me that we'd begun reversing the order of things. That through more and more rules and regulations and confiscatory taxes, the government was taking more of our money, more of our options, and more of our freedom. I went into politics in part to put up my hand and say, stop. I was a citizen politician and it seemed the right thing for a citizen to do. I think we have stopped a lot of what needed stopping. And I hope we have once again reminded people that man is not free unless government is limited. There's a clear cause and effect here that is as neat and predictable as a law of physics. As government expands, liberty contracts.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, good evening, good evening. This is Jason Morello, also known as DJ Loudmouth, your baby mama's favorite DJ. We are live on the air worldwide right now. Tri-State Takeover, Sunday nights, on your AM/FM dial, that's right, WPAT nine three zero, on your AM dial and affiliate AM/FM stations. That is broadcasting this program nationwide. Let me repeat that one more time. Nationwide. Who's Next NYC FM, of course, as always, on all platforms, devices, tune in radio, tune in app. You can listen to us in your cars, everywhere, tri-state area, national, worldwide. And of course, you're listening to the Tri-State Takeover. And we're gonna be taking over for sure. You bet your butt on that, you know, FCC there, you know, so. Uh, yeah. And this is the Voices of the Artists you can be hearing for the next hour or two hours or three. It's also, uh, you know, New Artist Sunday as well. Uh, we have a lot to do, music reviews. I guess we're gonna try to do our top ten, I don't know. Uh, since I didn't do it last Friday, but we'll figure that out. But we're here, we're here live in person and we got some big news to drop in a few minutes. So tell a friend, tell a friend, tell a friend. WPAT nine three zero. Go lock it in your car right now, Jersey, Philly, Long Island, Connecticut, New York City, Long Island, and worldwide, national on WPAT nine three zero AM. That's dot com. And of course, tune in radio, Who's Next NYC. The next movement for indie artists is worldwide. We break hundreds of artists every single day from around the world, twenty-four seven, not once a week, uh, like other stations. Uh, so though, so here's the host of Voices of the Artists, the lovely, the one and only, Bossy B.
Yo, it is good, the tri-state area. Shout out to those who's doing their thing on the business side and furthermore, also shout out to those who've been pushing themselves, been doing their thing. You know who I am, Bossy B, in building Voices of an Artist. As well as I always promote is mental health is very important. Make sure your neighbor is good, your enemies are good, doesn't matter.
Even the Dems, make sure the Dems are good too. Make sure all Republican, conservative friends. Uh, yeah, everybody, all right, go ahead.
In that part.
And make sure I introduce everybody as well, yourself with your social media, as we do and.
Yeah, I know. Um, so before I get into mental health, I have here today, but also my partner, um, co-hosting here on WPTA two, nine thirty, I believe, that's the right correction. Um, Anonymous is in the building.
What's good, what's good, what's good?
My co-host, shout out to him. And shout out to our CEO of our record label called Epic Music Entertainment, Ms. Timeless.
Timeless.
Hello, hello. Shout out to everyone in the building.
First of all, I wanna say it's an honor for you to join us this Sunday evening to, uh, to experience this. We definitely wanted you to come aboard and experience this, that experience we want to.
Thank you, I'm just as honored, I love you both.
Oh, we love you too. And it's crazy, shout out to TikTok because that's how I met my bestie.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay?
So, yeah, yeah.
Started on a live.
Shout out to TikTok.
Tell us about that.
Yes, um, when I came across a live she was in, it was somebody else's live that I was actually friends with. I don't remember the name, so forgive me because I'm probably no longer their friend.
I remember, but that's a whole nother story.
That's a whole nother story. But, um, yeah, so it started out there and I saw her there and she was just like, you know how you know a person's aura? And it was just like, it was so, I don't know if anybody out there are very spiritual. I am very much spiritual and I'm an empath. So, it may be a little freaky for you guys and weird, but I'm gonna tell you this. I can tell a person is real. And it's crazy, even through a live screen. It's just the conversation that comes with the personality is so important. In any, any relationship, friendships, family, that is so important to have. And the fact that I was drawn to her with that because she's like the realest person I know.
Yo, I'm gonna keep it real, every time I participated in those very lives you speak of, yo, she had me rolling. She has the craziest sense of humor, but it's so freaking fun.
Yes, a little too honest for some, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's another part. Too honest, but it was, that's the point. She was too honest and I'm the same.
Yeah.
And we never judge each other. Friendship should be that way, you know, nowadays friendship don't last long because people get too much in their feelings and it shouldn't be that way. You should respect each other, always be there for each other in friendship. And that's how I met her. Her personality drew me to her and it's like, okay, she gets me.
And Bossy, you forgot, you forgot the fact that, uh, that Timeless was also on one of my videos from yesterday.
Oh, yeah, that's another thing. She actually was part of his video and it was really, it's a super dope video, y'all gotta need to check that out.
It was the last minute thing and she aced it, she aced it.
Oh, thank you, it was an experience, we had fun with it. Everybody in the video, it was a great vibe, it was good energy. And shout out to everyone who was in the video and the producer and the one who was recording.
They won, they won.
Very patient with us, very patient with us.
Yes, because we had a long night.
Yeah, we did.
It was a long night.
It was fun, it was, it was, it was really fun. I believe I had to work that night as well.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
You pulled it off though.
I sure did.
That's why, that's why you left this sort of point, I was like, let's go. But hey, priorities, priorities.
I would've loved to hang around in a vibe after the video shoot, but I, you know, I had to handle that.
Yeah.
Priorities is the best.
So from that on, that friendship just bloomed to more because I could talk to her about anything. And I don't get along with a lot of females, okay? And, and we all females are out there, we understand why because the ego is too much in the middle of a friendship.
Yes.
And that's always been a problem with females, having women empowerment and, you know, being, coming as one, it shouldn't be that way. It should always be women empowerment, support each other.
I support a hundred percent women empowerment. Of course, my partner, um, besides you, uh, Bossy B is a partner as well. Um, and I'm assuming she's gonna be our future partner as well in this.
Future's bright.
All right, um, of course, Vail G, um, she's been a longtime partner with me business-wise and personal for the past, uh, you know, almost ten years. And we wouldn't be where we at today without this platform and without the contributions and sacrifices that me and Vail G made um, to get us where we at today. We started in the Cable Access Station on Fifty-Nine Street almost ten years ago and we had like twenty people in attendance the first time we did like a little showcase or whatever. And now, almost ten years later, you know, from DTF Radio, um, from being on, you know, independent stations, online stations, uh, you know, having affiliation with Hot ninety-seven, with Drew Ski at one point and everything, uh, with the movement and all that. Um, where we at today now with WPAT for almost a year and a half now on nine three zero AM and now we have national and worldwide syndication, distribution. We have our own twenty-four hour digital, um, you know, radio platform, FM platform and everything we could speak and, you know, about these social issues, about mental health, awareness, about homelessness, you know. We all go through things, we all have depression, you know, time to time. We all get suicidal thoughts, we're down and out. But the strength of each other, our friends and family and even strangers will get you out of those situations and there's definitely help out there for anybody. You could call in, um, you could listen to us, you know, and everything. And, uh, you know, we got a couple calls now, just put them right on the air. Yeah, let's get it, let's get it. All right, let's get it, let's keep it going. The number is two one two, two one nine, nine, six, nine five, two one two, two one nine, nine six, nine five. And, uh, just keep it clean. You in TikTok, call in too. We're on the, the air.
Yeah, why not?
All right, and, uh, yeah. So who we got? Uh, you're on the air, uh, talking to us, uh, what's up? Uh, you're on, uh, on the radio with us, uh, with DJ Loudmouth, you there?
Hey, DJ Loudmouth, thank you.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, the Honorable Sergeant Gonzalo Duran, I believe.
Yep, it is.
A candidate for, uh, I believe, Congress, uh, New York fifteen in the Bronx.
All right, BX over here.
BX in the building.
Welcome in.
What's going on? I remember you, I remember you. Welcome to Voices of the Artists on WPAT nine three zero.
Gonna raise tank first.
Who's Next NYC FM. Uh, tell us what's going on there, uh, Mr. Duran?
Well, um, you know, I was checking, uh, some notes, uh, for some things that I'm doing and I, I was heading in that tomorrow, uh, I'm heading over to Manhattan to drop off some vacation work, uh, DJ Loudmouth. Uh, you know, I'm happy to see that I, I plan, I am. And I'm planning to endorse him for city council.
Wow.
If I'm coming here.
Wow.
And, uh, you know, I'm planning right now, um, to get him on the conservative line, uh, for the ballot and to get him access to, to make the general elections for next year. Uh, I'm hoping to get him some more support, uh, with other, with other birth parties, with our fans. And, you know, this is, I hope, be the first step in, uh, during, um, you know, after political career that he's about to, you know.
Wow, thank you so much. Coming from you, a person that, if you guys don't know, he served our country honorably after nine eleven. He enlisted, um, you know, um, to defend our country in the war and terror. After they, um, crashed planes into our buildings, uh, just a few blocks from where we're sitting right now. And, um, the patriot, the true patriot that he is, he enlisted right away and, uh, joined the Marines and he served and fought. Super five. That's right, super five. Hoorah. That's right, hoorah.
Frontline, frontline.
And, uh, he was there in the war zone, uh, defending our freedom and, uh, giving those, uh, you-know-what hell over there for what they did to us on nine eleven. And, uh, since then, he's been a champion of, um, of social causes, of, of the homeless, the elderly, the youth, you know, um, all, you know, transgender, you know, you name it. You know, he's, he supports it, he, you know, he's a, he's about unity. And together between me and him and people like we have here in the station and all listeners, it's about unity, not division. Um, regardless of politics, whatever, uh, you know, red, blue, we're all New Yorkers, that end of the day.
Yes.
And it's about putting New Yorkers first.
New Yorkers first, yes, that part, that part.
We need more people like, uh, Mr. The Honorable, uh, Gonzalo Duran and we need to support his run for Congress, uh, for New York fifteen in the Bronx. And of course, uh, we have, he, you know, I'm gonna have his support as well. Uh, running, uh, for city council. Officially here, I'm announcing, uh, that I am, as of this morning, three forty-five, um, three twenty-five AM, I officially am a official candidate for New York City Council District Two in the East Village, the Lower East Side. And, uh. East Village, that's where I work at. Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, there you go.
Elias, Elias.
We're gonna hook up, you know? DJ Loudmouth, I do wanna ask you something. Oh, how, uh, this is the perfect opportunity for me to ask you. And you can stay on the phone for a few minutes with us and join the conversation as well if you're still there. Mr. Duran. What inspired you in this immediate, uh, uh, change that you've, uh, you've discovered within yourself, a burning passion, I might wanna call it, to, uh, to run for council, or? Well, um, because I'm a true patriot, uh, I'm a New Yorker, I got the, literally, I got the Yankee tattoo on my right shoulder. And that's not just for the Yankees, even though I'm a diehard Yankee fan, just like, uh, uh, Gonzalo Duran is, you know, gonzaloduran.myc, gonzaloduran.myc. Uh, anyway, um, I am a true New Yorker. I love New York. You know, for the better or worse. And, you know, I've been in New York majority of my life, even though I traveled around the country and stuff like that. I'm a New Yorker always, no matter where I go. I was in the, the sticks and, and, uh, in a town in Virginia that had five hundred people. I was rep in New York from there. Wait, wait a minute, you originally from Virginia? No, 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 I, I lived in Virginia and I visited Virginia for a couple years. Um, you know, about, uh, you know, seventy, eight years ago, whatever. But no matter where, I would, I went to Canada, I went to Maine, it doesn't matter, I'm a New Yorker, you know, no matter what. And, uh, so my family, just like the, uh, Mr. Durant's family and probably several of your families, served our country in the military, they served World War One, World War Two, uh, you know, the Korean War, Vietnam, all the way up until now, Iraq, Afghanistan, you know, the Middle East, whatever. So, my family, you know, is that, uh, lineage as well. And so, I am fed up with what is going on in my neighborhood. You know, especially Alphabet City, the Lower East Side, the East Village, um, what's going on in the projects, um, you know, NYCHA. It's, it's even my own apartment, because I live in public housing. Yeah, for, for, for those of you, uh, that, that aren't familiar, for, for the people, the audience that aren't familiar with what's going on, why don't you elaborate on that? Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's crazy. Uh, they contaminated our water a couple of years ago. Um, they contaminated our water with the construction they're doing that's not regulated, that's not, um, supervised or whatever. They put chemicals, um, in the ground where we live at in Jacob Rees and, uh, Jacob Rees and Living Ward and all that, um, houses. And, uh, they tried to cover it up, but people actually died. So, so, so there's documentation? Yes, there's documentation. My mother was in ICU with high levels of arsenic in her. Wow. And where would that come from? It would come from the water supply where we drink and eat.
The walls too.
And in the walls.
Fix it and the cracks on the walls.
We still have mold. I, um, I have a, um, kitchen cabin and sink, you know, underneath the, you know, that has mold and stuff in it from water damage from repeated, uh, pipe, um, busting. And they never replaced it. Uh, my mother's bathroom is supposed to be handicap accessible, they did repair because we had mold, we had asbestos. They found asbestos on our apartment, so they removed most of that, you know. But they left us with no guardrails for my mother. I'm, I'm part disabled as well, so, uh, they, they, we have no guardrails in our bathroom where the tub is at for over a year now. And we're still waiting because their confidence in NYCHA, because they just got indicted. Several NYCHA, um, contractors and stuff, like almost fifty of them got indicted. But Latisha James just announced that like about a month or two ago. So if your position that you're trying to, uh, establish with the council, what is your motive, what is, what is your, uh, your goal here, what is your objective? It's simple as this. And Durant could chime in as well if you want, um, at, at this time.
You know, whether I go in before, because I was ready to go.
Yes.
Um, because part of my, he said he makes me sell a travel a couple minutes ago. Uh, so, you know, not, not everybody has a Jewish spirit and that. Uh, you know, in the last, you know, this year, uh, DJ Loudmouth has mentioned that a lot of the programs that I've done, working with the community the last, uh, the last couple of years, in the last few years, you know, we have worked in many of the programs hand-to-hand. So, when it came about to see, you know, who, who you want to stand to, uh, I could bike channel for the Bronx, I was a conservative party, you know, one of my tools and tactics and, and, uh, that's how I became so strong in other programs as well. Uh, you know, I have been connected with the Bronx, the Brooklyn一带, and, you know, I've already formulated to the Bronx. And, you know, we had a great opening in Manhattan, one of the top things that I threw out there recently was DJ Loudmouth. And it's been a little, uh, for, for not only the work that he's done, then the last thing we had, Loudmouth, but the work that he's done over the years. Now, my goal is to get him on the ballot, uh, because he's gonna need support from these districts as individuals that, that can support not only physical needs, uh, but also, um, financial-wise and financially. So, I'll give it, you guys gave the conversation, the only one to give is, you know, um, David, you know, Jason.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, with the support of us, I can guarantee that the people living up there, the people in the room, uh, Mr. Jason Morello, DJ Loudmouth, will be on the ballot, uh, as a candidate for city council next year. Uh, the only thing stopping them, will be getting the votes from the people. And, uh, we are here, we are in hand, we are talking with guys.
You too. Thank you so much. Have a great day, have a great day, brother. And look forward to both, both of us being inaugurated in the next, uh, year or two together.
And I just wrote the name down so I can make sure to remember, yep.
Let's get it.
I'll be vocal for you.
Have a good one. That was, uh, Sergeant Gonzalo Duran, running for Congress.
In the BX.
New York fifteen in the Bronx.
Yep.
Make sure to vote for him, he'll be in the general election. And primary, uh, vote for him, more information, gonzaloduran.myc, there you go. Yo, so now I totally understand why last Sunday, what I said, I'm not, y'all took that so personally? Yeah.
Yo, but I can, I feel you, I feel you.
So to, to circle back on what you said.
I was going for Robert F. Kennedy for a minute.
Yeah. But, um, make sure you talk to the mic if you're gonna talk, uh, make sure you, you have it with you. But to circle back on your question, uh, why am I running? Um, it's for my community. It's, uh, for all the low-income people. It's all the people that are homeless. It's all the people that are struggling here. Tell me how are you doing, whatever level you are, you're all struggling, right? You're feeling it the past four years.
Yep, yep, yep.
Definitely the last four years post-COVID.
Yep.
Um, how are you feeling at the pump when you, when you put gas in your car?
I just noticed it went back up to three eighty, it was just three forty-nine like a few weeks ago. I literally just filled my pump two weeks ago and it went up twenty cents.
How do you feel with your grocery bills when you go food shopping?
I don't even wanna see a supermarket no more.
And how about a supermarket?
I just went right now.
Inflation, Bidenomics, how's Bidenomics working out for you guys?
What's that part?
Bidenomics, that's, that's supposed to be the, uh, the economy of, uh.
Like AI-anomics?
I call it BS-anomics, like. But let's, let's get back to the citywide, city level.
Yeah.
It's simple like this. We need to fix our migrant crisis.
Yes.
I know politicians won't touch this with a ten-foot pole, but I'm not a politician. Even if I get elected into office, which I will, because I'm already polling at over thirty percent today. The first poll came out in my district of registered voters and I'm polling over thirty percent without even being on the ballot. And this is day one.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that's Democrats, that's conservatives and, and undecided independent voters, thirty percent, day one. So, I am a serious candidate and I will be the next, uh, city councilman of New York City of District Two. But let's keep it simple here, I'm not running for myself. I am running for all the people out there, the small business owners that are being taxed and fleeced, all right, by the city of New York, by the Adams administration, by Carlina Rivera, who is the current district leader of District Two, which I'm publicly calling out. If you're so connected, Carlina Rivera, and if you got all the political stroke.
Licking her up.
All the way to Congress, how come is Mount Sinai Beth Israel closing? It's scheduled to close in July. And if it does close, that's gonna be real bad for my district, our district, for tens of thousands of residents, because if somebody gets a heart attack or stroke, the response time by having a, uh, ambulance come from Twenty-Eighth Street to downtown, they're gonna be dead. I was go, went into cardiac arrest a couple years ago and if it wasn't for Mount Sinai Beth Israel, I would not be here right now. My mother was in ICU for respiratory cardiac arrest, double COVID, the whole thing. And if it wasn't for Mount Sinai, she would not be here right now. Wait, she had double COVID? She had double COVID ammonia. Wow. The original COVID whenever it came out.
And the second strain that came out, yeah.
She got rushed to the hospital, New Year's Day, to that, twenty twenty-one. And she was on life support. By the time she made it to the, the hospital, she was, she was on life support. And she was on life support for several weeks. Well, I, I'm gonna tell you like this, uh, DJ Loudmouth. Uh, I'm not political. Yeah, yeah. But, but, but. You don't have to be, to be. But, but, you're dissociating my energy. But, but I, I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna support you on this, because this is what you wanna do. It seems as if you're passionate for this, I'm, I'm sure, uh, you have remedies and, and resolutions that you're gonna present and, uh, make possible for change and, uh, I'm definitely with it, if you, if you're with it, this is what you wanna do, I'm definitely behind you. Let me ask you guys another question. Uh, I want, I want just to go around, I don't want just me here.
Okay.
Um, how do you guys feel about violent offenders, uh, being released because of lax district attorneys and judges? How do you feel about that, so they could get, they could get released and go, uh, go and kill somebody? Or rape somebody?
I don't like it because I have children and the safety of my children is very important to me.
Facts.
And the fact that they just wanna release, release them like they're in a, in a little pond freely is disgusting to me.
With no plan.
Yes, they need to be reevaluated.
How do you feel about it? And what's your name again, please?
I'm Timeless.
Timeless?
Yes.
Timeless, all right.
We'll talk offline about it.
I know, but how, how, but how do you, how, what's your point of view on the, on releasing violent offenders? Um, uh, they get slapped on the rest by the district attorneys and the judges?
I think it's ridiculous, especially if it's violent. I mean, get the drug dealers out before you touch the violent offenders respectfully. I'm not saying that's any better, but, I mean, if you're gonna talk about priorities and prioritizing, let's do that, you know, focus on other issues before that.
Definitely.
Because they, they, they're there for a reason and they, they can't be out right now.
And how about this? We go after career criminals, violent offenders, instead of presidents?
Yes, yeah, that's a good point.
Now, regardless of what your beliefs with former President Trump, how does a former president of the United States and the leading Republican, um, nominee and potential next president of the United States, the way, the way things are going right now in the country and the polls, he's even making a run for New York City? And I support that, Democrats for Trump, conservatives for Trump, Republicans for Trump. But regardless of the fact, it's simple like this. How does a former president of the United States has more indictments than a former mafia boss? There's definitely somebody with a vendetta.
Yeah, there's definitely a figure.
What I asked the district attorney of New York, of Manhattan, um, Alvin, uh, uh, Bragg, I think, or something like that. If you're gonna use that same energy against a former president, that's cool, I'm with that. Make sure you use that same energy for every violent offender, every offender that rapes a woman or transgender person or whatever. Go after them with the same energy that you do with Donald Trump. That's all I'm asking for, keep it a hundred, keep it equal.
Yeah.
Because if me or you will go outside right now, in front of Wall Street and shoot somebody, you best believe our butts will be in, in, locked up.
Yeah.
With a clickness.
Yep, yep.
But we'll probably get out because of Alan Bragg, because, you know, slap on the wrist, it's okay. Uh, you know, um, here's a juice for you guys. Um, um, here's some chips for ya and here's your bus fare to go home, uh, no, no worries, you know, you're, you're good. But you're going after the former president of the United States. If they could go after him like that, they could go after us like that.
Of course.
Maybe, maybe if they, they can develop some sort of program, uh, like an anti-release before they are released to, uh, really, uh, you know, stain it in their brain.
They need a solid plan.
Some kind of therapy, some kind of a group therapy or, or one-on-one. No, definitely, definitely.
They need a solid plan, they have a meditation, but it needs to be proven, not just.
That's where the mental health falls in.
Exactly.
You know.
For those that are needed.
Yeah, it should be that we in everything. It, it should be in like every coffee you make, you feel me? Like you gotta have your favorite coffee every day, it should be just like that. And the consumers like us, we want what we want and it should be able to have that advantage in terms of mental health resources. You know, pushing the issue to reevaluate certain situations and don't, and don't leak it to the media. Because everybody has a personal life and we like to have peace. Because everybody has a personal life and we like to have peace.
Yeah, even though I'm I'm a public figure before I was I announced my candidacy, but now I'm really gonna be a you know a public figure and you know I but I'm.
Yeah, and it's okay. It's okay to get um close.
Yeah.
But not to the point where it's like people have access, you know, to you too much. It's personal life should be personalized and people need to understand that we all go through mental health and nobody knows what we go through, you know, and that's how it's supposed to be. Mental health is very important. So please, like I was saying before, please always check on yourself. Get it's okay to break away for a little bit and take a little break. It's not a crime. You could always come back to it. Don't give up. I'm not telling you to give up because don't give up cuz where there's a will, there's a way. And when you have that will and you get that way, you're gonna go to places. Blessings are coming, things that people used to say about you. It's not gonna hold you like a weight on your shoulder. It's not gonna do none of that. You're just gonna have your head up high, walk in the streets wherever you go because you know why. You have faith, you have hope, you know, you believe. And those things are very important. So mental health, please understand that we all go through our things, but make sure that you go and get yourself checked. They also have local listings. I'm gonna mention them right now. It's still over there and I'm very sure in your state, wherever you guys are you know located, please always try to look for your local numbers to if you need help or somebody needs help, please get that help. It's very important. So you dial um pound nine eight eight for mental health, suicide and crisis lifelong. It's two one two in New York, four two seven fifteen hundred. They have Spanish and English if you need a translator. For worldwide United States, you can text seven four one seven four one. And that is right there. You need the help, please get it. You know someone that needs it? Support them, stay with them.
Definitely.
Get them the help.
Well, TV is providing wonderful resources.
Yes.
Resources.
Yeah, can I add just one thing?
Yes, absolutely. We got a caller, but go ahead, quick.
For those who are professionals, um there's a lot of insurance companies covering that at a hundred percent. That means no copays. Um there's also a program called E A P. So for your professionals, those are free resources. Um because of the way the world is, a lot of this is free if you're um an employer. So um just another plug.
Hello, you're you're on the air, caller?
Yeah, we are.
Alright, who is this and where you calling from?
Hey, this is uh
Hey, how's it going? Uh well uh tell us what's going on. Obviously you've been listening to W P A T nine three zero, just like hundreds of thousands of people are right now. Uh tell us how you feel about what we're talking about here, about New York City politics and about mental health and everything.
Hey man, well, you know, I just think we need to change. I think mental health system does need to change and not because even with the city policy.
Yeah.
So um I'm also I'm also having a campaign with that also.
Okay, yes.
Definitely. Um um yeah, you know, I think it does need somebody changing and the changes that need to be done is where like first, that's that's be how we can define our community, right? And what and yeah, we I feel like with the little things and changes going on within our community, how can we make it better, right?
Yeah, our our phone lines are blowing up right now. Ha the uh we're one person at a time. Uh do we have another caller on the line as well?
Yes, this is Crazy.
Uh who is this and where you calling from?
Uh this is Crazy Joe from upstate New York. I need some coffee. Get his studio so I can sit there like.
This is Crazy Joe. He's one of.
He's Joe fucking Cheats over there.
Well, hey, we're we're struggling. We're struggling independent artists and uh struggling politicians over here, you know?
Forty minutes to find work game.
Trust me, if 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 I had the millions of dollars that Eric Adams isn't be throwing at my uh opponents, uh well, we'll we'll uh you'd be coming here in a limo. How about that?
Yeah, I I.
We need we need Eric Adams to dump whoever he has and to back me because I am the next city councilman and uh I might even F around and run for mayor as well, uh since I I noticed there's an opening for mayor next where next year. So I might just throw my name in there as well and see what happens.
Yeah, but that caller had a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh I wanna.
Well, I should know. I'm I'm making a statement. I'm gonna be part of the uh the of the staff. I have a
Yeah.
show with the boss there. I call him the boss, the big J. He's a big boy, I tell you that. I mean, I hate I used to see that guy in the dark alley.
Oh my god.
Well, hey, 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 he's a teddy bear. He's a teddy bear.
I'm only I'm only gonna be gangster against the Democrats, the social the social Democrats that wanna give billions of dollars of our taxpaying money uh to migrants and defund the police. Uh you know, make it dangerous to people getting shot and stabbed in the subways in our communities. And they're going after presidents to get us instead of uh violent offenders. That's all.
Well, you know, it's the same world today and I don't understand what's going on. Why all the violence and hatred and I never seen such a difference between.
Yeah, you should be there too.
He's a part of the people, but that will be sudden. Uh they become, well, look at all the people crossing. That's Biden.
Yeah.
He just got a permit so he can get votes. That's insane. Brilliant idea.
Well, he lost mine.
And did you hear uh last night while while people was? Take it easy, calm down, calm down there. Keep it keep it PG while FCC.
I just was on your side. What are you talking about?
I feel like for the Breakfast Club here, we're like we're the Puerto Rican, we're the Puerto Rican uh Breakfast Club here.
Oh, I bet you're my.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm Cuban, I'm Cuban, American.
I'm actually, yeah.
Italian. We got other callers here uh uh one at a time. Uh stay there. Who else is on the air with us and where you're from? Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Um um who you are and where you're calling from?
Uh this is Patricia Lopez and I'm from Mexico.
Okay, this is my national press secretary. You always have to be ready.
Okay.
Uh Patricia Lopez, uh give us a few minutes of your time.
Welcome in.
And how you feel what's going on here in New York City politics, uh in general, New York City and the country?
What's going on, Ms. Lopez?
Hello, hi, hello. Um actually, what's going on, what I feel is that there's more work to be done. We have a lot of work to do. We're behind on a lot of things that's going on in New York City. Um there's a lot of things uh uh we need to um find ways to make it better, first of all, to for the people that are in New York City. And we have to make it where we can actually um move forward and we still need to be on this.
Absolutely, definitely.
Yes.
So how you feel how you feel about me as a candidate uh running for city council and perhaps uh mayor of New York City?
Um I think I I I believe you because you're gonna you're gonna really get the difference in New York City and you're gonna make a difference in people's lives and you're also gonna make a difference in um and just like you said, you've done a lot of clinical.
Yeah, because the only reason why I'm running is because Carlina Rivera and people like her and Eric Adams administration couldn't get the job done. So if if they would've got the job done, I would be staying here behind the mic. But unfortunately, because they can't get the job done, uh we're gonna have to send a man to do a boy's job and a girl a little girl's job. And uh that's what I'm gonna do when I'm inaugurated as your next city councilman uh in January of twenty twenty-six and perhaps the mayor, the next mayor of New York City as well. And I am dead, you know what, serious. I'm not playing no games. I got five hundred plus thousand thousand listeners and this is just for start. Uh yeah, uh we've got a big megaphone here and we're gonna take this nationwide straight to City Hall.
Eh eh eh.
And we're gonna be there sooner than you think.
And with those.
Yeah, go ahead.
Am I gonna be out of a job?
No, uh.
No, we're gonna make New York great again.
You could, we're gonna make New York City great again.
Yes.
America great again and we're gonna make Crazy Joe great again.
New York first.
And put him on the air here every single week.
And I wanted to.
Yeah, you're gonna get it.
I want a real job. I want you to drive it.
Yeah, could. Well, no, no, no. We we have Secret Service for that. We have bodyguards. Just just focus on the driving.
I definitely.
And 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 Italian food. And and we love uh you know good cigars.
I definitely wanna add. I definitely wanna add.
Yeah, yeah, we'll work on that. Once once I'm elected, uh we'll work on all that. We got you. Alright. Now who you who you voting? Who you voting for? Who you voting for next year? DJ Lamau, right?
That's all.
Jason Marlowe, alright. There you go.
I definitely wanna add. I know that's right.
Alright. Yeah, everybody, Jewish, Italian, Muslim, Islamic. I know people are scared to say the word Islamic. Islamic.
Actually, they make a lot of sense.
They're not terrorists.
They make a lot of sense.
They are not terrorists. They're not. They're good, hardworking people.
That was a setup. But that's a whole nother discussion.
I made a whole transition to Islam.
Yeah, we'll talk.
So yeah, some of my best friends are Muslim.
Yup.
There you go.
Oh, man, you don't you don't mess up with the you don't mess up with the Joe reference.
I know. Alright, thank you for calling Joe.
You almost had my vote. You almost had my vote.
Well, you're so soon.
I do I do wanna add. I do wanna add that there was something you said that we definitely now live in a time age that uh that women have very significant roles in in far as uh at the jobs they hold, the job titles and and hell, women can do exactly the very same thing a man can do.
Yeah, I mean, I I I know.
Amen.
Um I agree with that hundred percent, but I'm for.
There should not be a but.
But I'm sorry.
Uh however.
I'm sorry.
However.
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 There you go.
Um a woman has led District Two for the past decades.
But that's not every woman.
Yes, but.
That's not every woman.
The Democratic's M O is to get a Latino, a Latina woman um as city councilwoman and they've been doing this for thirty years. And some of them were good. I'll give you that. And I voted for some of them. But I even voted for Carlina originally when she ran in twenty seventeen. I backed her.
I wanna know who this Carlina is.
I backed her and Atisa James. But the difference between the two, Atisa James Attorney General, she's a good friend of mine. Uh she her office helped us out with a situation a couple years ago, which I'm not gonna mention, but I appreciate deeply, regardless if she went after my boy Trump. That's regardless. But you know, let's keep it separate. And I'm and I'm friendly with uh Kathy Hochul, the governor of New York as well, okay? So and I'm technically a Democrat for now, but obviously I'm not gonna be for long unless they publicly endorse me officially as their uh official only candidate and everybody else drops out. Other than that, I'm conservative all the way, all day, every day, and uh we'll accept the backing of the Republican Party too because we need an alternative in our neighborhood. Even if I don't win, I'm gonna put up a fight regardless. But the simple fact is this, Democrats in District Two and most of New York City have run unopposed. They have won elections and jobs that pays a hundred forty, fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year, unopposed. And Carlina has destroyed the Lower East Side East Village. She has decimated our green space, the East River Park. She covered up the contamination of our housing, of our water, arsenic, other chemical materials. It's time for her to go. This is her last term and I'm taking over. Me and all the ten to thousands of residents in the Lower East Side East Village is taking over and taking back our community and taking it away from the Democrats.
What what was her name again?
Carlina Rivera, district leader two. She knows who I am cuz she's been to my house twice.
Wow.
She's been to my house twice. She came to our fundraiser, our back to school event without donating a dime, but she came to a back to school event that me, Veronica Vail G and our friend Gemini put thousands of dollars and gave our school supplies, back to school, uh food. We had Lydian Ward. We had everybody get together at that point. We were friendly. But when you know, some stuff happened a few years later. Alright? She's an absentee landlord. She needs to go and we're not gonna have another puppet of the Adams administration, whether they're female or male. It doesn't matter.
Why why does it feel like I'm gonna debate here?
No, I gotta say, no, I'm actually loving this.
In closing, uh in closing.
Yeah, I got.
For this, I wanna say this. For the record, hold on, before you guys speak, I'm gonna vote for someone who will fight for you every day, for you and your family for a better tomorrow, to protect and fund N Y J, alright? And to keep everybody in their apartments because they are planning to kick us all out of N Y J and put billion dollar buildings there, just like they're doing on the west side, the other side, alright? We're gonna keep N Y J. We're gonna keep people in their apartments. We're gonna make sure they're funded fully, no corruption, and people are are gonna have live in a for in decent apartments that everything is clean. There's no asbestos, no mold, no cancer cut, um um you know toxic chemicals that could kill you, your pets. My pet cat died because of the arsenic.
Oh my goodness.
Whoa, 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 your cat?
My cat died.
Yeah, that's.
We did an autopsy and it he had high levels of arsenic and other chemicals that came from the water.
Hold on a minute.
I gotta say.
And by the time I tried to, it was too late.
Yeah, I gotta say one, go ahead.
What?
Don't talk about the cat. Listen, I gotta say one thing. I love what you're saying.
Yeah.
First off, I love what you're saying. I just wanna say one thing.
Yes, please.
As New Yorkers, we were taught to be Democrats.
I know.
Let that sink in.
Brainwashed.
Let that sink in.
There was good Democrats back in the day.
Yeah, okay, no doubt about it. But the my the Democrats twenty years ago, when I was graduate, when I was in um high school, is not the same as it is today. And people really need to do their research because we're really caught up on a lot of social media, he say, she say, and no one's really digging in their own research, like on route reliable resources, like relies rely, excuse me, reliable um sites, not just social media videos, not just look it up yourself.
Because it's sad. Uh I spoke to, before I let the people talk, that's on the air, um that that's on the phone. Um it's sad. I had this conversation with uh Mr. Durant and the chairman of the Bronx Conservative Party, uh Patrick McManus, that people were literally without knowing who is on the ballot, just because they're Democrat, they will vote down the line.
Exactly. And I I was that person.
And they wouldn't even know them.
I was that person.
And I was that person too.
I was that person.
And Carlina unfortunately was one of them.
I literally went down Democrat, Democrat, but I didn't know any of those people, what impact they had to the community, what type of.
And so you feel it afterwards.
Right. And that's the key, the impacts of the community. You have to pay attention to that.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
And to follow up on you, I'm gonna let you continue. Everyone keeps focusing on the presidency. The president has the least impact in your lives. You know who has a hundred percent, a million, billion percent impact on your lives?
Is it the Senate?
No, before the mayor, your local city council. The city council are the ones that can help you or could screw you. And they screwed me when they took my car last year. That was for me, for transportation and also for my disabled mother that has cancer and is dying. And the city could give a you know what? And I had to take Eric Adams administration to Supreme Court of New York and I almost won. I had a temporary judgment against them. Ultimately, I lost the car. The bank repossessed the car, obviously, you know, once things get piled up. And I was out of work because of my health condition and everything and because of taking care of my mother, you know? So yeah, but if if I could do that against the administration of New York City and sue Eric Adams, sue uh who whoever, what what do you think I would do for you uh that live in my district or anybody in New York City once I'm elected into office? I will hold all these people accountable. We're gonna have hearings, hearings, you think the hearings for Trump and all that? No. Eric Adams is gonna go up front of a freaking panel on the migrant crisis, on the crime, on covering up the stats, on allowing the migrants to come here and not sending them back immediately. Instead of giving them debit cards for ten thousand dollars, send their butts back to where they belong. You wanna come here, come here legally like my grandparents did through legal immigration.
That part, that part.
I am not racist at all because we're all sons and daughters of immigrants. Have them go do the legal process.
I have I have uh uh I have my TikTok.
And we want bail bail reform. Put criminals in jail instead of presidents. And put more cops on the streets.
They say can they get their jam on?
That's it. We're gonna have law and order back in the city regardless if Adams is reelected or not. Adams will have no choice but to deal with me. Adams will have no choice but to deal with me and work with all constituents, will be hundreds of thousands of people, and together, we're gonna solve these problems, I'm willing to work with Eric Adams.
That's dope, though.
Carolina won't be there, so I don't have to deal, worry about her, she's out of a job, alright, so she'll be fine. But whoever's the next mayor or even, even founding the mayor, uh, either way, I'm willing to work with Democrats that are fed up, they won't say it publicly, but they're fed up with all this BS, uh, all sides are gonna get together, and we're gonna, I want to appeal Centenary City Status, if we can't fix the problem, we're gonna eliminate it. And if, unfortunately, if we have to remove the Centenary City Status to unlock billions of dollars of taxpayers' money to keep community centers open, to keep hospitals open, to keep schools open.
What happened to the Big Apple?
That's what we're gonna do.
That's what I'm saying, you remember, I put to free programs.
Go ahead.
I will, okay, no, sorry.
Let, let our panel speak first, and then you have opportunity, uh, Giselle Fu-Fu, go ahead, Miss, timeless.
So, I'm curious to know, like, I know, this sounds great, and I'm, I'm with you, I'm actually, you know, I came for a podcast and I came to support my best friends, but it's turning into, it's turning into like a really serious thought process, like, all jokes aside, I'm joking, it's funny, but this is the real world, right? And so I ask you, right, like, this is great for your district, do you have buy-in from support throughout the Five Boroughs? Because in order for this to really be successful, my under, my thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're gonna need buy-in. Are you on that path for buy-in, to get everyone on your side, to, because there's always this historical thing that, you know, New York is automatically Democratic, so what's your plan and your contingency plan as it relates to buy-in from other counties?
Well, I already started, well, since a couple of years ago, um, obviously, I'm a product of my community for over thirty years, being a lifelong resident of Lower East Side, uh, lo, you know, lo, they call it, uh, Los Sida, you know, your Eli, Elias Sida, whatever.
What?
So, I'm, I'm a product of my community for thirty years, I worked with countless nonprofit organizations, community centers, uh, youth programs, everything, the whole nine, just to name a few here quickly, uh, so I could answer your question.
And I do see that, like, for example, the gentleman, Mr. Durant, I don't wanna forget his first name, but he's representing the Bronx, so you have, it seems like he's a good plug for the Bronx.
Yeah.
And you have his buy-in.
We're, we're building a coalition on all Five Boroughs, and even on a national level, so briefly, over the past twenty years, I worked with the Boys and Girls Club, even, um, a, um, what do you call that? I even was one of those kids, myself, you know? So, the Bo, the Boys and Girls Club on East Sixth Street, uh, between Avenue D and FDR, the Boys Club that used to be on Pitt Street and on Avenue Eighth Century, unfortunately, they're both closed, I will work on getting funding to reopen at least one of them. Henry C. Solomon, obviously, without them, I wouldn't have learned, uh, computers, uh, get hands-on experience, uh, to help me with some of youth program and stuff like that, then later on, I was able to help them back as well and volunteer their youth baseball program and all that stuff. Um, obviously, I've been part of Jacob Grease Community Center for many, for decades, the NITRA Intents Association, I've been working in Norwegian Poets Cafe, uh, Devil Dog USA.
Heard of them, yeah.
Devil Dog USA.
Norwegian poets in the house.
That's my family there.
I know, well, I don't know them, but I know of them, for sure.
And, um, the Devil Dog USA, which is a nonprofit run by, uh, Mr. Durant, as you mentioned, and he's been having that for over ten years, and that's a citywide organization, it's a nationwide nonprofit, um, it's a vet, it's a program funded by a vet that supports people from all around the country and in New York City first and foremost, in the Bronx, from youth programs, scholarships, mentorships, um, feeding the veterans, um, you know, providing job assistance for the veterans, um, for the, you know, elderly, the whole thing, the whole nine. We do so many things year-round, we do back-to-school drives, we do toy drives, last, with the help of Mr. Durant and my team, we went to El Barrio, Spanish Harlem, one of the poorest communities in New York City, and we gave out about two hundred toys to the kids in the community with the help of Manhattan Neighborhood Network or one of our community media partners, El Barrio Firehouse, shout out to them.
My daughter went to school in El Barrio, shout out to her.
Yeah, shout out to El Barrio.
And yes, she was special needs, so they took extreme good care of her.
And definitely, definitely, I got roots in El Barrio as well, I got, uh, roots in Spanish Harlem, uh, I got roots everywhere, you know? So, we gave out hundreds of toys and stuff like that, um, to, 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 uh, people in need, you know, families, you know, whatever, and we should've saw the smiles in the kids' faces, you just look at my website, um, the official website, djlamouthnyc.com, djlamouthnyc.com, or Jason, I'm sorry, D G, djlamouthnyc.com.
NYC.
DJ Lamouth for NYC.com, or Jason Morello for NYC.com, you see it yourself, you see the images of the kids, um, you see the, the images of our youth, you know, it's a unity, that's what we're doing here. This is not, um, you know, this is real, this is real life here, this is unity, regardless of race, creed, color, sexual orientation, I support everybody, I support LGBTQ, um, pronouns, everybody, we're all inclusive here, cuz at the end of the day, we're all New Yorkers and we're all Americans.
Amen.
And that's the bottom line, and I'm gonna be a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-generational elected official when I'm in office officially, because I am for the people, every day I wake up, I will fight for you, I will fight for the disabled, the homeless, I will put you guys first, I will be like Robin Hood, take from the rich legally through taxes and give to the poor. It's about time we focus on the poor, and not just come around like Carolina Rivera and Lilia Velasquez once every four years when it's time to get, uh, reelected, I will be out there every day, and my campaign, you guys will be out there every day, we're gonna be out, like Druski says, we outside, yeah, we're gonna be outside before, during, and after, when I'm elected as your city councilman for District Two and perhaps mayor of New York City. And we're gonna be outside, every borough, every neighborhood, and we're gonna support small business, give them tax breaks, give them relief from overtaxation, taxation without representation, we're gonna put an end to it.
Amen.
We're gonna put an end of the corruption of the democratic system, I'm not after the Democratic Party specifically, it's the system, the machine, that controls and keeps you behind, and keeps you in their foot like Constable's, like we're Nazi Germany. This is not the Democratic Party that we grew up with, with Bill Clinton and David Dinkins, uh, you know, whatever, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years ago. And I, I s, I have respect and aberration for President Biden, he gave us an award, a special honor and all that, but your time is done, sir, you need to resign, you need to end your term and don't run for reelection, because he's embarrassing our country by falling, stumbling, and what they're doing to him is disgraceful. Let him go out with dignity as a man that served our country for fifty years, I don't care if Trump gets elected or not. We just need a new generation of politicians, we should not have two eighty-year-olds respectfully running for the highest office in the country, respectfully. We need new voices, uh, just like Bossy V, Voices of the Artist, like Timeless, like myself, like Gonzalo Durant, like Fu-Fu, whoever, uh, Patricia Lopez, we need new voices, new ideas, not people that are special interests that have billion-dollar backers, hundreds of millions of dollars lobbyists, because the lobbyists are gonna do jack for you, but throw you out on the street, throw you out on the street, put you in the street, and have you working three, four jobs until you die of a heart attack, that is not the American dream that I grew up with, or our fathers or grandfathers did. We should be doing better now than we did a decade ago, two decades ago, and this is not just a New York problem, this is a national problem, we are the richest country in the world, and we have the most amount of poorest people. And this is in Republican states and in blue states. And tha, that's it, so if you're serious about making a change in New York City, consider supporting me, regardless if you're Democrat, Republican, conservative, consider supporting someone like me, djlamouth at, uh, djlamouthnyc.com, djlamouthnyc.com, Jason Morello for NYC.com, and also gonzalodorantnyc, he's running for Congress, New York Fifteen in the Bronx, and I'm running for city council, and F it, I'm running for mayor of New York City. So, vote for me, even if I don't make the ballot, even if I don't make the ballot as mayor, write me in. DJ Lamouth, Jason Morello, M U R I L L O, and let City Hall know that I'm here, we're all here, and we're taking over, and we're taking back our goddamn city. So, F you, F you, Democrats, cuz we're taking over, join us, or get that, you know what, out of our way. And that's it, enjoy the rest of the show, I'll be back in a while as DJ Lamouth.
TikTok is saying, music, please.
Hey, hey.
Make New York City great again. Hey, what's good, it's DJ Lamouth with Bossy V.
What's good, y'all?
We just finished doing an amazing radio show on WPAT nine three zero, every Sunday night, uh, from six to eight, uh, six to ten P.M. Uh, who's next, NYC FM, and, uh, definitely vote for DJ Lamouth for city council District Two and for New York City Mayor. So, uh, yeah, even if I'm not on the ballot for mayor, you can write me in, djlamouth, or Jason Morello, M U R I L L O, and that counts as a legal vote, so let's get it.
Yes, support, support, swear, I always stay heavy, support him on his journey, he has dreams, make sure you tune in every Sunday, and whenever he wants to go off, like, you know, he DJ Lamouth for nothing.
Definitely.
We out, y'all, with some artists, and Vero G., shout out to Vero G. too, girl, you know, we love you.
That's right, and remember, I'm not running for me, we're running together for you.
With history, the things that everybody went through, through the times that I was even born, it's, you know, it's very heartfelt, because I believe in our future.
Absolutely.
I believe in we all could be as United, as we say, United States.
Absolutely.
But the thing is that we have not been showing that, we've been showing very, the individuals divided too much, whether it is color, whether it is how you living in poverty, it's, it's, it goes on and on, so I like to see it to believe it. And the fact that he's going to do these things, I one hundred percent support it, because anybody that knows me, Bossy V, your favorite artist, your favorite radio personnel of Voices of Artists, I want to be able to support something like that, you know how I feel about supportive, and supportive starts with you.
Support.
Your voice.
Support.
You know, your voice.
Support.
Exactly, that's why I called this podcast Voices of an Artist, because you are an artist, whether you not know it or not.
I know that's right.
You gotta learn to advocate for yourself.
Until I met these two, because they're gonna be on my shelf.
Where you are.
They got me on my shelf, I'm here like this.
New York, baby.
Brooklyn.
Timeless, I'm watching a video right here.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's right here.
How cool is that? Oh, wait, you're live?
Yeah, we're live, watching a video.
I'm going on live of mine now.
That was a beautiful day, I loved that day.
I liked when you performed it in Harlem, right?
I didn't perform that in Harlem.
No, no, no. No, that wasn't the song you performed?
Uh-uh.
What was the song you performed?
Hate us to love us, hate to love us.
Oh, no, but I like this song.
That's where we was, Har, Harlem that day, right? Hey.
Yeah.
With, uh, with the legendary.
Saddam.
Saddam Dan.
You gotta say it right. Shout out to Saddam.
China proposed to me on the first day he met me.
Yeah, shout.
That, that's just like him, just, just like him, one day I'll bring him to the radio, say, he's a ball.
What song you wanna play, what else?
Oh, my God, that would be so great. Play Remember Me by Nick.
Oh.
Again.
Otra vez.
This Friday.
I just mean, but all you gotta do is TJ press play, yeah, I told you to leave your fingers alone.
Not only he has Tourette's Syndrome.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're just not gonna get it.
What next song you wanna play for to, for only half the song?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Only she caught it.
This one like one of her.
Welcome to New York. You gotta start that over.
Uh, yeah, that's gonna be on a little lean here.
What is going on?
Yeah, I got, I gotta tutor it back, just one second.
What's going on here is.
Oh, my goodness.
He can't stop setting up.
Man.
What ends up.
Leave, leave.
Don't worry, this is part of the podcast.
Yes.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, it's like my song said, it was yesterday.
Bossy V.
Feels like yesterday.
Oh, oh, we got a cappella going.
Cause it's okay, and it's okay, cuz it was yesterday.
Yesterday by Bossy V, available on all platforms.
Yes.
Just got released, how long ago, but what, this month, earlier this month?
Like, a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, check it out, please support.
Yeah, I can't wait to actually do a video for that one, I have a plan for that, I'm not telling you what it is yet, cuz.
There we go, yesterday, let's get it.
Yesterday.
Oh, snap, okay, okay.
Old-school soulful person.
Okay, okay, listen.
I was speaking back there when we came in, right, about, you know, sympathies and stuff like that, right? We were talking about the classical and music and stuff, this is who I am. Yes. Who sings this? Me. Bossy V.
There you go. Uh, somebody come back here behind here and do YouTube, man, I'm gonna go both.
Yes, I tried to be open, so unspoken, heartbroken, limit to anything, cuz yesterday feels like yesterday. Mental health, y'all, awareness. Yesterday. Okay, it's okay. As I write these letters. Not okay, my heart feels, feels a pain. Okay, yeah, I'm okay, but are you okay? Yesterday feels like yesterday. It's okay, y'all.
Okay.
Doesn't it okay?
Okay.
Feels like yesterday, but it's okay. Right? That's why we say.
Cam in the chat, giving Bossy V some loves, he said, okay, National City Council.
Yeah. Cuz yesterday was yesterday, y'all. Forget about yesterday. Positive, positive, it's a lot of positive vibes. Cuz yesterday. It was okay cuz it was yesterday. Remember that, alright? Today's a new day, tomorrow's another new day. Always, 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 always be blessed that you are alive today.
Amen.
Shout out to those who are struggling to live today. It's okay cuz it was yesterday. Remember that.
And tomorrow be a new day.
Amen, tomorrow.
Tomorrow is a new day. I love it, your body.
Yes, that was yesterday by me, your truly Bossy V. Y'all cop it out because it's so dope. Um I'm about to play another song in a few minutes. I mean, pause it real quick cuz our DJ, Mr. Anonymous, just like went out.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on there. Like, he just.
So, yeah.
He just left us in the mud.
Yeah, that part. Um but yeah, so shout out to those who've been listening.
In the mud.
Guys, sing it, Bossy V.
I'm not Bossy V, but you know.
Sing it.
Left us in the mud.
Yes.
In the mud we go. Aw, I love you, Tita.
One button, one person.
Momentarily, but put more music on. We're just trying to figure it out. Just kidding.
I got y'all, but no, um let's get into this segment real quick.
Okay, we're gonna go to another segment.
Love that. R and B joint, I'm, I'm a very big R and B, 90's R and B. I don't know about you.
Welcome in, God bless.
What is your favorite, Ms. Timeless? Your favorite R and B joint of the time?
Oh, that's hard. Can I go with artists instead?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's still hard.
It's hard to pick, right?
Yeah, but let me tell you, I'm gonna go with what I heard today. I was, let me say, I parked my car and I was jamming to it.
Okay.
One Try Remastered 2010 by George Michael.
Okay.
Oh my God. Put it on.
You know what? Yes, let's talk about it.
Put it on.
Well, I put that on, you talk about it. Why is that your favorite? Yeah, go ahead.
Because it's beautiful.
Duh, but.
And it's probably deep, it's probably relatable a little bit, you know, just a little bit.
Just. What's the relation?
I don't know, I don't understand the question.
What's the relation to it? What's the relation to it? Like, um what is the relatable part to it?
Well, it talks about like a guy and a girl and, you know, they love each other, but they just can't get it together. They just can't get it together.
Thank you, I love y'all.
They can't get it together. They really can't. And um you have to listen to the words.
Yeah, see.
It's called One Try Remastered 2010 and it's George Michael.
George Michael, he's a homie.
Yeah. So then I went into listening to his old music. So I like stuff like that. Keith Sweat, oh my God, Keith Sweat.
Tell me about it. Like the old school, like it makes you feel different.
Yeah, Mary J Blige, um even Faith has some good tracks. I mean, she's not one of my favorites, but she got some good tracks. Um Nelly, freaking Drew Hill, come on. Drew Hill.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, some under shared, some don't.
Madonna, yes, definitely Madonna. But she said R and B and I feel like Madonna's more pop.
I mean, she had, she's like pop between. It's crazy because some are, if you heard her albums, like I'm pretty sure you have, but if you heard her albums.
A lot of it is um R and B.
Most of it, but it's also therapeutic because some of it is like she's relating a message at the same time relating an experience.
Thank you, Brittany. FYP, we on FYP.
Alright, so I'm here. We said George Michael and what?
Anonymous, mine and Bossy V.
Yes. You said George Michael and what?
One Try 2010.
Oh, I see it right here, actually.
Remastered.
Uh remastered. I don't even think they have the remaster on YouTube.
I guess the original works too.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that it?
No, that's the commercial, so excuse the commercial, y'all. Um Bossy V, George Michael called One Try. This is actually a song that she listened to where she was driving, so let's see.
Hello, welcome in.
Relatableness that she was speaking of about two people trying, they need to get together, cuz he was about.
This is my jam. I parked and I didn't leave my car until this song finished. And it was only like 30 seconds in, so I stood there for the whole five, six minutes. And I was jamming and my neighbors must've thought I looked crazy, but I didn't care. I was still jamming.
I mean, it's always that one song.
Oh, yes. I love this song.
This song.
Oops, I jumped ahead. I'm about to listen to this on my way home. Yes. Made me cry all the time. That's all they do is make you cry. Every single one of them. Yes.
This song.
And even though it's R and B, I'm still jamming.
No.
This is like a all 24 hour mood song. This is um George Michael. I love this song. This song is powerful.
Made me cry.
I got a song request after this.
One more song I wanna play.
Well, I gotta play my nephew.
Okay.
After this one. This is how we do here. Who's Next NYC FM Radio, baby. That's right. What New York radio really sounds like. Every single day, 24/7 on your FM dial. Who's Next NYC FM, who'snextnyc.com, who'snextnycradio.com. Alright, Flacks, we are the real station for hip hop, R and B, all that good stuff, throwbacks to today's hits and even some politics as well. Who'sNextNYCRadio.com, baby. You know the vibes. DJ Loudmouth approved.
And that's what you call balance.
I went back on Who's Next NYC FM Radio with the sisters of George Michael right now. Uh where's the thing, radio?
See, bestie, that's why I adore you. Cuz you know, it's like when you have that connection with somebody.
The whole song played.
Yes.
This DJ Loudmouth here.
So we learned a, a very interesting.
That was George Michael.
We don't wanna. George Michael. And now we're gonna switch up. Alright, we're not doing, we're gonna do commercials in a few minutes.
Yeah.
Uh shout out to Honda, shout out to State Farm, shout out to uh McDonald's, WWE 2K Games for sponsoring and advertising on Who's Next NYC FM Radio. We're about to end our broadcast here on WPAT, but we're still on the air on Who's Next NYC FM on all platforms. So continue listening to us there on TuneIn. And we're gonna close today's show with uh my nephew from Florida. Shout out to you, shout out to Damon, shout out to Annabelle. Uh we're gonna listen to Lance Leo right now, uh with his hit single called Time, I believe.
Yes, I can't wait.
Just listen to it right now. I love everybody and make sure to vote for me.
Next councilman.
And next for City Council 2025.
Yep.
Alright, this is Lance Leo, Time, DJ Loudmouth. And we're gonna continue on Who's Next NYC FM, who'snextnyc.com, who'snextnycradio.com. Continue listening to us on there as we sign off of WPAT. Be back next Sunday night, eight uh, you know, eight to nine PM or eight to 10, whatever.
Yeah, I'm most likely coming back too, in case anyone cares. In case, in case anyone cares.
Alright, I'm turning my turn.
Alright, guys, love y'all. I gotta go ahead and hold. Hey, bro.
On the air, not the hall. Oh my God, this was yours.
Yeah, but it's long. I can't hear myself no longer.
This DJ Loudmouth breaking new artists, the hottest.
I'ma leave it.
Artist of the week is Lance Leo. The song is called Time. DJ Loudmouth approved. Your baby mama's favorite DJ. Send your submissions to Who'sNextNYCRadio.com. Get on AM FM radio.
Sorry if I missed your earlier messages.
We'll check you guys out next, Sunday night, 8 PM Eastern and
Me, me.
Uh 6 or 7 PM on Who's Next NYC. So we're, we're about to be uh cold, we're about to be cold green.
Okay, I'm having so much fun. I'm coming back next week. I'm coming back next week.
Yes.
I love her, y'all. Do support my best friend. Follow her, y'all new words, follow her. She's so, so.
This is my life, so they're gonna follow me.
So, like I said, if you said.
For the Instagram. Tell it to the followers.
Before I got Instagram. She is awesome. Y'all need to follow her. She is very, very spiritual and a go way, the whole vibe, my best friend. So do follow her. Do holla at her. She's a good support sister. And thank you for tuning in. I'm talking like how we saw her coming back next Sunday. And do support my best friend. She is so awesome. I adore her. She's a great vibe, y'all, and she's super supportive. Alright, I love this girl. Okay, so take care of my best friend, alright?
And follow her. She's Bossy V.
Yes, follow me, Bossy V. Y'all know who I am.
She's an artist too.
Yes, artist and radio personnel.
Benny Button's my bro, bro.
Hi. React to the building, the lure.
He's like on my day one.
Yeah, I'm taking off for all.
Were you supposed to live?
No. Alright, y'all. Hi.
Hi, Daisy, much love.
I've been drinking a lot.
If I miss anybody in my holidays, you know, I didn't need to be rude. Um I'm with the house now. See, I have to do a street party today, guys.
Babe, I'm hungry.
I love y'all. I'll be back. So y'all, I'm about to turn this live up cuz I'm. As I was saying.
Yes.
Shout out to Z1 for producing this video.
I'm about to make Bossy V a judge when I'm, I'm City Councilor. When I'm, when I'm the mayor, I'm gonna make her a judge.
You don't wanna do that.
Yeah, well, hell, I do.
Yes, we do. I need protection.
Alright, so we're doing.
We've been doing it for years. Why can't I?
We're doing a live artist review show right now, Who's Next NYC FM Radio. And uh this is social media as well, so you guys could send your, uh the comments here. And I don't know if you guys on social media, no? Okay. But I'm live on Instagram, DJLoudmouthOfficial, and we're doing live music reviews. You're gonna get our feedback, so uh go ahead, Bossy V, tell us what's the first one.
Um Promiscuous Gal by Anonymous, directed by Z1.
Anonymous with a Z at the end. I know, I got the Z, but I spoke promiscuous.
Spell it promiscuous, go ahead, please.
Promiscuous?
P R O.
No.
M I S C O U S. Promiscuous.
Spelling contest.
Oh, my bad. Don't listen to me.
You know, that is a special.
Oh, it found, it found Nelly Furtello, but it don't.
The guy.
I got it. I got it. Wait, no, wait, wait. Promiscuous, I got it. Alright, so we're about to review the song and I'm reviewing the video as well, the visuals.
Alright.
And it's on YouTube, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
And uh yeah, Promiscuous Gal.
I'm not in it.
Anonymous shot by Z1. If you need those 8K visuals, uh holla at me, holla at Bossy V. Uh Anonymous, Timeless, you want 4K visuals, holla at me. DJ Loudmouth, I do need to work as well. And I need some campaign funds, so uh, you know, legally, so uh yeah, alright, let's get it.
And interestingly, this is the video that Timeless was in.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, wait, she, oh, okay. I knew I saw her somewhere. Alright, we.
About to get her.
She's hard to, to miss. She's hard to miss. Yeah, I could tell that. I could tell that from here. Alright, let's go, keep it clean.
Let's go.
I mean, we're on, we're not on FCC, but let's get it. Here we go, Promiscuous Gal, uh Anonymous.
Let's go.
Let's get the music here, hold on. People can hear in the background. What the fuck is going on here? Number one.
Video.
Let me turn the mics off.
Me.
Yeah. Alright, Promiscuous Gal, right now, for people looking on social media. Uh what song you want us to play, uh out there, you're watching? Uh G-Star, which song you want us to review, what of yours? Boss, the boss is back. Last Testament, you want Last Testament? G-Star? Tell me which one you want. You want us to review a song? Uh Jay fucking Dela, who else is on the line? Uh Black Diamond, uh what do you want us to review? Tell me right now. We're here till 10 o'clock. So hurry the fuck up. Alright? Opposition, I got you. Opposition's next. I hit my cash app too. Hit my cash app now. This is my favorite part, right, right? Yeah, that's. Oh shit, there she is. Okay. Alright.
I don't like the way I'm.
Yo, what are you doing?
My, I know, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't signal. Yes, but mine's still in place. Yeah, I know, I see her and maybe it was like. I'm like.
How's the quality in this?
It's 4K, it's pretty good.
This is 4K?
Yeah, it's 4K.
Yeah? Do you have any footage on here?
I do, you can raise it. I already put it over the.
Okay, I wanna check out your quality.
Okay.
How's the sound though? Cuz normally those cameras are cheap. It may have good video with the audio.
It's alright. And it has, it has its moments.
Yeah, you definitely need lighting for it in that.
Yeah, it has its moments. I usually know when it's outside.
That's why I got this camera. This camera is a few, a few dollars.
Yeah, that makes sense. That was my, my, my. I like that so. I like that. I like that, I like that. For the phone, but actually I have a stream. I love it. Yeah, I had a camera. Oh my god, look at my face, guys.
We got a debate going on, on social media, people debating the song. So we want people's feedback too, let's get our mics back on. So we just heard Promiscuous Gal and I saw the video. And that, and we're getting debate.
A debate, or just?
No, people are talking, feedback and you know, stuff like that.
Okay, let's go to the audience first, and then we can like.
Alright, so the guys on our social media, on my Instagram, you guys heard the song Promiscuous Gal? With Anonymous, what you guys think of it?
Guys, please do tell us.
And what, these guys are commenting about my pizza. Alright, before we play the next song guys, what are you guys' feedback on Promiscuous Gal? Did you guys hear it while we were playing it? And I'm gonna play a song of Mistress as well. So one at a time. Any feedback, anybody, you people's arguing over the pizza. You guys want pizza, like, what's going on here?
Hungry, that's what it is. What's your feedback, y'all?
Alright, my feedback, the video is very good, it's very intimate, it's spicy, it's hot. So I'll definitely rock with it, the song, everything is good. The, from the beat, music wise, production. The video, the visuals are good. You know, I wish I had a little bit of that in my life, you know? You got like two girls there, like what's going on there?
Yeah.
I gotta, I gotta stay away from you, you, you.
He's dangerous.
He's dangerous, he's dangerous.
I mean, they, they were promiscuous.
Yeah. I gotta be careful. I gotta be careful around you.
Shout out to Vinny, he said it was fire, Vinny98NYC. And G-Star said it was dope. Anybody else? Um, my opinion as his manager, I love it, I love the visuals, I love the concept. When you, you know, do music, you're supposed to bring it out the way he does. And when I say that is that, being an artist, that's your moment to be creative. That's your creative moment, whether you singing, dancing, doesn't matter what it is. But the way he rung it in, I loved it because it was close to Halloween, you know? And I love vampires, I'm a vampire fanatic. I don't care if it's not real, but I still love it.
And Timeless was a New York vampire.
Yes, and my best friend, she was a New York, she was a New York Rican vampire.
The Cardi B version.
The Cardi B version of it.
Uh, we have the, we have the Chinese version of Nicki Milla's Cardi B. On our station 24/7, Mila Baby.
Oh, I heard of her, yes.
Yeah, and she's heavy on rotation.
She's a good artist.
And we got Arnabi as well, you might, you know, Arnabi. He's one of the top 10 Japanese rappers, we got him. Who'sNextNYCRadio.com. Who'sNextNYCRadio.com, yeah. We can listen to all these amazing artists. Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, so what's your, what's your opinion on his music, his track, his video, everything? And your experience too, because you was part of the video.
I liked the video, it was really nice and it was very well thought out.
Not just because you were in it?
A lot of because of people. But mostly because there was a lot of creativity behind it, there was a lot of thought into it, like Bossy V, the. She kept consistent with the theme, the whole vampire look and just the whole.
That was on top.
Yeah, yeah, it was really good, a really good creative thought process behind the video.
Yeah.
And honestly, I heard the song and it was cool, but when you did the video and you understand what they're really saying behind it and like kind of the creative vision that was behind it, it brings a little bit more into it.
Yes, it goes with the vampire.
Yeah, yeah.
It goes with the vampire, because you know, their vampire with their, you know, not, you know, not real.
It was at nighttime too.
Starving. Vampires are very, they addicts. So Promiscuous Gal, if you put it together.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, you know, adultery side. People can get addicted to that. You know, and that falls into play and it's really dope how he did it and everything, I was super hyped about it even though I wasn't in it. I was like, yeah.
Alright, there's more on to the next one.
Yes.
So there you go, solid, keep up the good work Anonymous.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing more from you on Who's Next NYC FM and WPAT and everything, you know?
Absolutely.
And again, one more time, Anonymous on all platforms, what is Z?
At the end.
Alright, at the end. Alright, and there you go. Alright, so the next one right now is called Opposition with G-Star FuFu. So let's hear it.
Let's go.
What's the next one? What's the next one? You guys leaving?
No, no, no.
He's not leaving, he's only moving, he's only getting hungry. No, no, he's going to the bathroom.
Alright.
He's gonna be leaving, so he's gonna go back to the video.
You can take photos.
Yeah, yeah, oh, that's why, as it gets, as it gets more like, yeah, a routine.
Mistress Music is next and then we have another submission by Bossy V.
Yeah.
What song Mistress Music? Whoa. Yeah, I'm sensitive there.
Great to them.
She did this song with Kibbe Link. Oh, the after party. If you wanna see the video, did you see that video yet? What Mistress Music and Kibbe Link?
Yeah.
Alright, we've heard enough. Alright, alright, alright. Well, I guess it's only me and you. Alright, we're not playing the whole tracks here, we gotta.
Yeah, we gotta, um.
We only have to play like half the track.
We gotta have a time, um, limit to everything, but for future, future submissions, please do continue to submitting and you know, supporting our station because it's really important that we wanna get you heard, you know? Just try to get in the submissions earlier before time, you know?
And where they could do that at?
You can do that, voices of N R, L W P A T, you can also go to the website itself, because we're on the website actually right now, because we actually tried to close the other station. But you can follow us, Who'sNextNYC.com. Tune in station, I will be providing also, if you're following me as well, I'll be posting it. And so DJ Llamaf, he got his stuff on his page as well and a link into his bio, I'm pretty sure, so. Follow us, get your, you know, your lyrics played. And let's get it, you know, I love to hear different people, let's go.
Alright, here we go. Alright, it's called New York Stand Up, alright. Alright, so quickly, the feedback on Opposition. Uh, that's my boy FuFu. The visuals need some work for the video. Uh, you know, the visuals definitely need some work. Um, the song is not bad, the song is good, the audio quality is good, you know? Maybe it could have added a little more, I mean, no, I mean, overall, the song wise, audio wise, Opposition, uh, Ops, uh, is a good song, uh, the beat, the, the production of it, it just maybe is missing a little something. But the visuals definitely have to be improved. Uh, I'm seeing shoddy, you know, I'm on social media here and you know, it, it shitty work, you know? It definitely needs professional lighting. Um, it definitely needs to be shot by somebody the caliber of Jam Pie Media or Z1. But, but yeah. I mean, just approved, you know, you know? I see what you're trying to do and stuff like that, I mean, I would have, if I would have shot Opposition, I would have did it differently. I would have did some outdoor stuff, going in the hood. You know, I would have, you know, since I'm a script writer as well, I would have definitely had different scenes, locations. I would have better lighting and, and stuff like that, because the lighting makes the difference, you know, when you shoot a video. And either you have too much lighting, too little, or you don't have none at all. The visuals are key, because the visuals was push a video. You know, it affects album sales. You can have great music, but if you don't have the visuals that go with it. You know? Uh, what's your feedback on it, Bossy V?
Um, my mic needs to be on, hold on.
You just heard the song, so you just have to, you know?
The mic is off.
Oh, sorry, it should be your mic too, right?
Testing once, now it's better, yeah.
Oh. Sorry, go ahead.
No, um, I liked it, I didn't get to see the visuals. Um, I'm really gonna go check it out, because I'm not gonna give you guys a feedback on that, because I have to see the visuals.
I should just focus on the.
Um, lyrically, um, the delivery was dope. I like, you know, you're trying to relay a message, but at the same time you don't want to relate, uh, the wrong message. Um, I am an A and R as well, when it comes to music and I love messages in content. Um, right now, we're not trying to promote a lot of, um, violence. Uh, if you could just tone it down a little bit, but try to use things in metaphors, then that, that will be super dope. Um, because there's too many songs that are out there that are sounding the same, is what I'm saying. And I just appreciate the delivery though. You got the hype, you got the idea to be hype, you're very comfortable in your track and that's really, really dope. But you do need to understand that we're trying to calm down that part, when it comes to the violence and so forth and so forth. So if you can try to do something that's therapeutically and can relay the message in a way where it's positive, you will say everything freely, especially if you're speaking your mind, like from experiences. That should, that should be your focus, your experiences, not everybody else's. I'm not saying that you aren't trying to be like everybody else, but I do hear the same type of tracks all the time. And sometimes that could be boring, I'm gonna be honest with you. Switch it up, have fun with it, don't give up though, for real, for real.
Alright, you sound like Solid Circle there. Shout out to Solid Circle. You know, definitely. Alright, we're gonna switch it up now to, unfortunately, I don't, I can't find the track right now.
Uh-oh.
But we're gonna play Mistress Music, um, I'm So Bronze, so just see if you're so bronze. Just hear it right now.
Oh boy, you gotta make us look good, please.
I hope this is a real one.
I pray.
Alright, but don't get both there.
I'm gonna stay an extra few minutes just for this right now.
This is gonna be played on radio right now, 100,000 listeners, so. Uh, we're gonna see if you're the bronze.
Please.
Alright, let's go.
For real.
There you go, Mistress Music. Mistress Music, I'm So Bronze, on YouTube and all platforms. And you can watch the video with me. Okay. Okay. Alright. The mics are off, sorry. Okay. 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 This is not the going rotation, I think.
Yeah, that's a definitely.
Yeah, she's like the, she's like, she's spitting like the female Cuban. If you watch the video, you can sit next to me or, it's like the female Cuban.
Yeah, she's definitely, um. She's a good lyricist, she's putting it to the test.
I know, I'm awesome.
She's putting it to the.
Okay. Okay.
Now, if she could do a Manhattan version, I guess, I could just come with a campaign.
I heard it.
No, I have to edit that, for real.
Yes.
What do you think?
I like it.
Yeah?
I'm so bronze, I just reckon it well.
Finally, finally, finally.
I'm already with the hook.
Finally, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm so bronze.
I'm so bronze.
There we go.
That's how you represent it.
Alright, that's how you do it. That is the video right there, the song.
I was nervous, I was nervous.
You're nervous, it's making me nervous.
Yeah, bro, we good, we good.
Now, if you could do.
That's a way good sign off for my ride home.
Let's put the mics back on here.
Yeah.
That is definitely, uh, that is definitely, uh, I'm So New York.
Definitely.
10, 10 stars, 10 toes down.
Yeah.
All I need Mistress is a Manhattan version, East Village, uh, uh, Lower East Side version and we'll use it for the campaign.
The only constructive feedback I have, and it's not in her control, is the video, because it looked a little fake, but.
Well, yeah, she was using.
Her vibe was dope. Her, her attire, her gear was dope.
Mm-hmm.
That was definitely New York and BX for sure.
Yes.
But it was also New York, not just BX, so that's what's up.
I love it, I love it, it's like, I, I felt that, I felt that, if you can make me feel that, you got a lot going on, girl. Keep shining, keep bringing more.
That's what I said, I know it's not in her control, she's just babysitting.
Yeah, it's okay.
But the vibe is there.
The message was related, thank you.
The message was relatable.
Yes.
Because that's what needs to be relatable.
Yes, thank you, you delivered that perfectly well. Can't wait to hear some more, what?
You know, and I gotta say, based on your comment before.
There you go.
Um.
You just got DJ Llamaf approved.
They gotta do more metaphors.
Mistress Music got a Florida, DJ Llamaf, Bossy V.
Because that's where it becomes relatable.
Keep it up, keep up the good work.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, you too, metaphors help. It, it does help because.
Because no matter what you're saying, someone's gonna relate to it.
Exactly, it don't even have to be.
And it's female empowerment, it's aspiring, because you always got guys, but to get a female like that, a balequah.
Yes.
Spit it on the mic and throw 10 towns, 10 toes down, yeah.
And actually rap.
Because you, I don't wanna mention names, but you got feet, like you said, the males are cloning, you got a lot of, you, there's a difference between hip hop and rappers, there's a huge difference in those categories. There's, um, there's a lot of rappers, but there's only a few legitimate hip hop lyricists, you know?
Amen to that.
And, and the female side, you know, you got a lot of clones, a lot of wannabes.
Yes.
I'm not gonna mention names, you know, I'm trying to keep.
It's, it's what, it's, it's like, you want to be accepted in a world of equality.
Mm-hmm.
How is that if you're trying to be the same person that you're choosing not to be?
Yeah.
So it's like, make that make sense. Because it doesn't make sense for you to wanna be somebody like yourself and then you have this, it's, don't get me wrong, it's okay to admire, you know, it's okay to admire somebody and support them and stuff like that, it's okay. But if you want people to take you serious, you gotta take yourself serious. Because they seriously be truthful.
And dressing like a dot.
Yes, that is not getting you nowhere.
And you don't have the talent to back it up.
Exactly.
Uh, you're gonna be called out on it.
Exactly, exactly.
But some people get away with just looks.
You can't, you want respect, you gotta earn that.
In a way, I consider I spice in that category.
You're willing.
Yeah, she could spit, she could spit, but also there's a lot of post-production behind that, auto-tune and all that. I'm an audio engineer as well, uh, music producer, so I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But, you know, she's more, uh, what's that word? She's more style than substance.
Yeah, which is understandable, you know, um, I don't condone the craziness, you know, the craziness that goes on in the industry when it comes to the ladies having to do what they do. You know, I don't condone it now, because that's, that's just me, I'm not into that. Uh, when you wanna be sexy, you gotta be sexy. You don't need to be half naked to be sexy. I, you know, they do what they do, good for them, you know, shout out to them, but at the same time, you want respect too. And nobody's gonna give you that respect if you're behind, it's all up in a screen, you feel me? Um, but to each his own, you know, I support women that grind hard in the business. You know, do your thing, but also be mindful when you're doing your thing, because at the same time, not only you an advocate, you are your own person now.
Mm-hmm.
And people need to take you serious, you feel me? So it's like rethink things before, you know, anything, and don't put yourself in a situation you don't wanna be in as well. So that goes along with what he was saying, DJ Llamaf, about the, you know, being half naked, twerking and this, that and the third. You know, you don't want people to label you a certain way.
Because we grew up, we grew up, we're old enough that we know real female, real talent, you know, the Missy Elliotts.
Yes.
Um, TLC, Saw and Pepper.
Even Aliyah, that she was dressing sexy, she still has sophistication behind her. There was still a level of like dignity that these artists have.
Even with males too, because males do it too. Males do it too, though. It's the same with males too.
Yeah.
So you want respect.
Well, you got some men, you got some men coming out wearing dresses and stuff, I, I don't know about that, I mean, I support, I support the gays.
Yeah, no, but I get what you're saying, it gets a little bit much.
Yeah, there's a crossover, like, like, what, what do you, I, I don't know.
And then someone will be, and you know it's crazy.
Taiachi69.
Some people be thinking it's funny when it comes to situations, but it's a real lifestyle. People, you know, they have secrets that they're not, you know?
No ditty, no ditty.
He's one of them.
I never went to those parties.
I almost worked for that when I was younger, I think, luckily.
I'll never forget trying to like get an internship there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I was.
Yeah, because I wanted to be in the music entertainment.
Yeah, I, I applied for them too and.
Yeah. And you know, it's sad, um, people, I support heavy, the gay community and.
Yes, definitely.
You know, it's not funny, it's just like someone trying to be disabled, think about that.
Exactly, and people make fun of that every day.
Exactly, why would you try to be disabled?
Hmm.
For what, for views? Because it's not funny. If you are who you are, be who you are, stop trying to be somebody else, like be for real, like be yourself. You know, and a lot of people portray that and it's sad. That's why everything is falling apart lately and, you know, I'm not gonna get biblical, but hey, the world's coming to an end somehow and y'all just helping it.
I'm gonna go and then.
Let's go.
We're about to close out the show. Uh, alright, so we're gonna close it out now to Lazarus the Top Don. Uh, we can listen to it, I don't know if you want to review, we already know about Lazarus the Top Don. And it's all, he's blown up in all stations everywhere, including ours, a street legend, we'll check you guys out next week. Uh, we're gonna try 6:00 PM, if not, well, I don't know, hopefully you guys could get here earlier.
Yeah.
I could get here earlier, I was here at 5:30, got parking by 6:00.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was actually on the dot, I could get here like an hour, today they're doing a shoot too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if that's every week, but.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's no problem, because, um, Sundays, the weekends, they, you know how ends.
Yeah, I know. But we're gonna close it out now with Lazarus the Top Don, street legend, check us out next Sunday night, 6:00 PM. Uh, Who's Next NYC FM Radio. And 8:00 PM to, uh, 9:00 or 10:00, WPAT, 930 on your AM dial, and Who's Next NYC FM, you know the vibes. Try State Over Takeover, that's what we're doing, um, on the radio and in the ballot boxes as well, you know? But, uh, yeah, so, there you go, and, um, I didn't do the top 10 tonight, this weekend, it will come, I will drop it online for you guys, so stay tuned for that. And that's it, uh, you know, vote for DJ Llamaf already, blah, blah, blah. DJLlamafNYC.com. Uh, no ditty and say no to Democrats as well. No Carolina Rivera, no Eric Adams 2025, DJ Llamaf for mayor, DJ Llamaf for city council, and Gonzalo Duran for Congress, New York 15 in the Bronx, alright?
Shout out to Virgil G.
Shout out to Virgil G.
Um, sending you love and prayers to her and stuff like that, hugs.
I don't wanna say too much, but condolences go out to her family at this time.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I wanna say two more, but, uh, send our deepest condolences to her family at this time, um, you know? With that, our prayers and thoughts are with you Virgil G and your family.
Amen.
Alright, so we're closing out Lazarus the Top Don, check you guys out next week, follow us on the Gram. You know the vibes, DJ Llamaf, your baby mama's favorite DJ.
Bossy V.
Oh, yeah.
Bossy V and your baby mama's favorite councilman, alright?
Oh, yeah. Alright, I gotta.